Just thank you, and I have a really great team at the high school. I couldn't do it without my paraprofessionals. And I have great families and great students and great administration. Thank you, Mrs. Hudok.
Congrats, Sam.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And did we get a picture, Mr. Straight?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next recognition is the Spirit Award. And this award goes to Mr. Brian Darling. Mr. Brian Darling from Queen Anne's County High School. Congratulations, Mr. Darling. This is for you. Please stand right here while we read some fabulous things about you. Your print right here is fine. And your principal, Mrs. Hudok, is on the screen as you can see. Mr. Brian Darling, who is the class of 2014 from Queen Anne's County High School, is this month's Spirit Award recipient. As one of our beloved Part D teachers, he enthusiastically and energetically makes a difference each day, all the while bleeding green and gold, as we can see, and modeling for his students what it truly means to be a Lion. In addition to handling the various objectives in the life skills curriculum, Mr. Darling is also the self-appointed healthy lifestyles coach for all the students, often making them or taking them to the stadium to walk, run, and stretch. He truly demonstrates to his students what learning is, and it's more than just bookwork. The scope of his Lion's pride also extends to the football field each year as he coaches Lions football. Go Mighty Lions. Congratulations, Mr. Darling.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Congrats, Brian.
And our next recognition is the Shining Star Award. And this award goes to Ms. Amy Krugel. Ms. Krugel, come on in. Congratulations. Stand right here, and this is for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Just stand right beside me, right here. And we have Mrs. Hudok on the computer screen.
Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Krugel is a full-time paraeducator at Queen Anne's County High School, and she is essential to the success of the students in the Special Education Part D program. Her down-to-earth personality combined with her no-nonsense attitude makes no challenge unsolvable. Ms. Krugel is always looking for creative ways to enrich the daily lessons and brighten the day of her students. Even in the grips of a pandemic, recipes she prepared for the students became single-serve, and she mined for gold to teach elements of the call of the wild. I love that. All made possible by Ms. Krugel staying up late and taking care of collecting all the materials. And honestly, this isn't even going above and beyond for her. This is the only speed she knows. Ms. Krugel is truly an asset to our Part D program, and her dedication and love for our students does not go unnoticed. Well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Last. Thank you, guys, very much.
All right. And we have one more. Last but certainly not least is the Hero Club Award. And this award goes to Ms. Madison Carson, a senior at Queen Anne's County High School. Come right in, Madison. Stand right beside me. And Madison, who do you have with you today?
My mom, aunt.
Mom and aunt, come on over. We'll take a picture for you so we make sure that you have it. Ms. Madison Carson, a senior at Queen Anne's County High School, has exhibited heroic actions consistently during her years with us through her work with the Unified Sports Teams. Ms. Carson has been a faithful and dedicated member of the Unified Sports Team from bocce ball to tennis to weightlifting. She routinely gives of herself to ensure that her less-able peers on the team are able to meet with success. Despite whatever challenges she was facing at the time in her own life, Ms. Carson has never hesitated to greet each Unified Team's practice and teammate with a smile and a hug pre-COVID and a positive attitude. She is also dedicated to these students that she's chosen to spend her spring semester internship assisting in their classroom, and she hopes to become a para-professional within the Part D classes upon her graduation from Queen Anne's County High School. And we would love to have you. Congratulations. We're gonna take a picture. And if you need us to, we can take a picture with your... Congratulations. Thank you, Mrs. Hudok.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
Thank you for everything. Okay, the next on our agenda is board involvement. Annie?
Sure, thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, the members have met with the three candidates for the superintendent search, hoping to have an announcement by the end of May. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and as just proven by the two recognitions of the Queen Anne's County High School educators, Queen Anne's County likes to grow our own. This speaks to the wonderful educators of Queen Anne's County Public Schools that put the spark in our students to return to educate the current students. I personally appreciate and recognize all the hard work and dedication of all of our educators.
Charlie, Annie?
I don't. Thank you.
Well, it's belated, but a heartfelt thanks to all our administrative professional staff in Queen Anne's County Public Schools. It was April 22nd, and a special shout-out to our very own Jackie Wright. They do such an amazing job for all of us. So thank you for all the administrative staff. I also attended the Queen Anne's County Public School Awards Celebration on Friday, April 16th. A great time of recognizing some amazing staff and teachers. And all the finalists for the Teacher of the Year were impressive, but since there can only be one, again, congratulations to Ms. Stephanie McKenzie from Suddlersville Middle School. And good luck for representing us at Maryland's Teacher of the Year. Mark and I finished our tour of the elementary schools with a visit to Mata Peak Elementary. And a quick congratulations to Principal Shrekengost, who is now doctor. Shrekengost, she just received her doctorate. And we are now visiting middle schools, and we are enjoying them immensely. I also attended the Student Art Reception hosted by the Kent Island Fine Arts in Stevensville, and we have some amazing talent in our arts classes. I can see why we win many awards, so that's pretty much it.
Nothing for me. Helen pretty much covered me in all that.
I just want to reiterate, it's, you know, I want to appreciate our teachers and our support staff and everybody that works for our school system in Queen Anne's County. It's what makes this system what it is and how great it is. So I really appreciate all that. I know this board does. And also the parents and the students that have gone through a difficult year, and we're seeing light in under tunnels. So we're hoping that we'll have a good summer and back in school in September. Thank you. Dr. Kane?
Absolutely. Happy Teacher Appreciation Day. And that goes for everyone who's involved with instructing our students, educating our students, so our support staff. You received a congratulations, thank you, from me earlier today, but definitely, I just can't say enough how important your role is, especially during these challenging times. Your heart is seen and is felt, and we thank you. I had several meetings, of course, over the month of April, and will continue to do so over the month of May. We continue to have superintendents' meetings for Eastern Shore superintendents as well as state superintendents. We continue to meet with our commissioners each month, and we'll meet again next week. The tours of the elementary schools and now we're on to middle schools continue. And of course, we have, you know, just an outstanding... Well, we did have an outstanding visit with Dr. Salmon this past month as well. But I just want to, once again, reiterate all of the pride and the appreciation that the exec team and I have for all of our educators. It has just been tremendous, the drive that you show and the dedication that you show. So thank you so very, very much.
Thank you. Our student board members aren't here this evening. Okay, we'll go by that. Okay, next thing we have, this is a public comment. Mark, do you have?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Okay, we ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. Questions or statements to the board should relate to a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Comments about actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or the board president. If you have a specific question, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question. The board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely, but asks, as a courtesy to this board and our citizens, to show respect for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Pass, our first, Kimberly? How you doing? Could you state your name and address for the...
Kimberly Couch, 605 DeVal Road, Stevensville, Maryland, 21666. Good evening, board members, Dr. Kane and others. My name is Kimberly Couch. Many of you have probably received my emails. I've sent several. Some of you I've had the pleasure of talking with directly at your business or in public. I appreciate your time. This year for my children has been a travesty. My children have not been engaged in online learning. My children have gone from honorable students, straight A students, to straight E students. I know that you hear this from many parents. I know that you share our concerns. Many children have been left behind this year. I'm hoping that we can start out next school year differently. One of the things that I'm here to talk to you about today is helping to engage those students who have been lost this year. There's been an increase in depression and anxiety among students. There have been many students whose grades have been significantly impacted by online schooling. I'm asking you to consider for next year allowing students to start next year with a clean slate for GPA requirements for sports and clubs. This is one of the ways that we can help engage students and bring them back into the schools, get their focus back into academics by knowing that they will not automatically be excluded from sports and from clubs. This is really an important part of students' engagement as well as the learning process for them physically and emotionally. For some students, it's the only motivator for them to be engaged in academics. I feel that this is a very important consideration for our students. I know that you may not be making this decision tonight. However, I want you to keep this in mind over the next weeks, and I hope that you can make a decision before the end of the school year and that you can communicate that decision to students to give them something to look forward to for next year. Our students need the discipline that is offered to them by sports as well as clubs, whether it is drama, engaging in student plays, playing a sport like football in the fall. All of that requires discipline from the students, in addition to discipline for their academics. I'm not asking you for this to supersede or supplant the classes and the academic rigor and requirements for those students, but this is really to complement that and bring some of these lost students back into our schools, back into the mindset of being engaged with academics, as well as bringing them a necessary outlet for their expression of their individuality. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Richard? Just for the record, can you state your name and address? Even though most of us know you. Can you state your name and address for the record? Even though I think most of us know you.
I can do that. Good evening. I'm Richard McNeil, president of the Retired School Personnel Group, and just want to make a few comments tonight, if I may. One is, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. Want to give a big hearty shout-out to all the teachers in the classroom and what they've gone through this year. And not only the teachers, but everybody behind the scenes, the secretary, the custodians, the bus drivers, central office, everybody. It's been one heck of a year, and hopefully, we can get off to a different start next August. We'll have to see how that is. But my heart is still in the classroom after all these years and still think about that very much so. Also, from our organization, we'd like to add our congratulations to the Teacher of the Year, Stephanie McKenzie, and all the other winners of that. Again, unfortunately, the gala was here. And not a real celebration, but it was a celebration for the talents that we have in this county, and greatly appreciated that. From the state, just so you know, we have our state meeting for the retired groups next week. And Queen Anne's County is going to be recognized in two areas. And I thought I'd share this tonight. I know it'll go out into the world, but one, we are being recognized for our community service for the year from all the agencies in the state. And we will be presented this next Thursday at our Zoom meeting.
Congratulations.
I know our group has been real busy supporting students and families in the county, even though we haven't been able to get into schools. So the other area that we're going to be recognized on, and this is an area that I appreciate, is we are being recognized for the largest numerical increase in our retiree group. You know, everybody works at a job, and they all want to stop and do something else. I'm enjoying what I'm doing. And one of the things that we do, appreciate working with the board and human resources for the retiree group that we can address before they get out into the winds and just disappear. We are hoping to have a celebration this July when things settle down a little bit. We didn't get to celebrate with retirees last year, but we'll, last year and this year, we're hoping to do that. And I'd like to mention Ava Honeycutt, who was an elementary teacher on Kent Island. She's going to be 90 years old on May the 17th. There's a push to send cards to her. They can't have a big celebration, but they are looking forward to that. So if you have a card and you want us to drop it off, she would appreciate it. And last but not least, I saw that the county increased the budget by $1. Please spend it wisely.
Do you have an address for that card that you could give Dr. Kane or somebody?
It's an email.
We have it.
It's an email.
Yeah. We got it distributed to everybody.
I think it's Post Office Box 43, Graysonville.
Thank you.
It's out on social media, but yeah, I did not bring it. But I think it's 43. I'll double-check.
That's long as Dr.
We have it.
You have it?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
How you doing?
Good evening, everyone.
Hit your name and address, just for the record.
My name is Karen Fields. I'm president of the Queen Anne County Education Association, and I'm a teacher at Centerville Middle School. So we had visits from board members and Dr. Kane this week. I'm glad that you could see firsthand that students are learning online and in the classroom. I hope you have gained a new appreciation for the work that teachers and staff do every day to support students. If you had come to my classroom, you would have seen us reading the great novel, "But Not Buddy", which is about a young African-American boy during the Great Depression in search of his family. It's all of love and loss and redemption, and it's a book that every 11-year-old can relate to. Despite the divisive social media noise from some quarters, never has there been a closer connection between parents and educators. We have been in their living rooms, and they have been in our classrooms for months. There is a mutual appreciation for what we do and what they do to support learning. Through this crisis, educators and staff have led by example, wearing masks with ease even when it's anything but easy, introducing yet another schedule, and assuring students that we can make this adjustment, helping students believe in themselves when they feel overwhelmed. One thing we have all mastered is perseverance with an ever-increasing amount of patience. Upon reflection, it is abundantly clear we are better when we work together. The Joint Labor Management Meeting has been a longstanding initiative of the association and QA superintendents to keep the lines of communication open between administration and members. The QA/CEA Executive Committee has met monthly with Dr. Kane and prior to that with Dr. Williamson. Concerns are addressed, and often solutions to problems that affect all staff and our students are found. This longstanding commitment has been even more important and productive through the pandemic. Our next meeting is tomorrow afternoon. We look forward to keeping these crucial meetings in place. Unfortunately, this week has also continued with the exodus of educators, support staff, and coaches from our county. They are leaving because they do not see a better future in Queen Anne's County. Recruitment and retention are major hurdles in ensuring that our students have the best education. People stay when their work is valued. People leave when it is not. It is the hope of QA/CEA that we reach agreements that show our work is valued and that our future is here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Can you state your name and address, just for the record?
Yep. Kent Wang, LA ING, 201 Tillman Neck Road, Centerville. So, good evening. I found that the timing of this meeting would be of great irony as it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'm here again tonight to express frustration. Frustration at this board and their treatment of our teachers and staff. I've come to the understanding that this board is refusing to even sit down with the teachers' union and perform good-faith negotiations, and I find that unfathomable. In a year that our teachers have stepped up, kept our education system going in a new environment, styles and ways not taught in colleges and universities, this board is turning their back on them. No, the last year has not been flawless, but the teachers have actually been amazing examples of greatness throughout. As things were in constant change, they adapted. When they got three days to learn a whole new system, they adapted. When they were asked to do something new, they adapted. Now, when there should be praising and offering of more support and resources to our teachers, this board is elected to play hardball with a take-it-or-leave-it attitude towards our teachers. Well, guess what? They're going to leave it. Highly qualified, passionate people are going to leave this county to other places where they are appreciated as educators. Or even worse, they're going to leave the field altogether. The winter when Queen Anne's County Schools has teacher shortages and retention problems won't be this board. It won't be the teachers, and it surely won't be our students. They are who this board is supposed to work for, our students. It should be to give them every opportunity to turn into pillars of society and make a positive... in students' lives than you are, even if this board fails to recognize that. And to you, Dr. Kane, good luck with your future endeavors in Pittsburgh, and I apologize on behalf of many people in this county that this experience was not more professional and positive for you. Thank you.
That's all we have signed up. Ms. Bass, does anybody else out there?
No.
Okay, thank you. Our next thing is presentations, Special Ed Staffing.
I don't have the presentation on here.
I'm sorry, I can't. Were you speaking to me?
The presentation's not on here. It's just the staffing plan, correct?
Oh.
That's okay. That's fine.
Yep. Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members, members of the executive team. For the record, my name is Jolene Smith. I'm the supervisor of special education. I do want to just start with wishing all the staff a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I think, you know, we would be remiss without saying such on such an important week. I'm presenting to you this evening the Special Education Staffing Plan, and kind of switch gears just a little bit. So the purpose of the staffing plan is to kind of meet two prongs. Number one, it's to align with COMAR regulations as well as MSDE procedures. The purpose of the staffing plan is to ensure that there is appropriate and adequate personnel and resources available to provide a free and appropriate public education for all students with disabilities in the least restrictive environment. So on page two, you can find evidence of public input as well as on Appendix A. Within this, you're going to see that the staffing plan is based on a review of teacher and related service staff caseloads and schedules. We also take a look at paraeducator schedules, and we discuss staffing patterns and trends as well as needs with administrators and staff. We do follow the staffing guidelines that are put out through MSDE, and we also talk with members of the CCAC. And then, you know, we also take into consideration public input at the Board of Education meetings. This slide shows that federal special education funds are not intended to be used to reduce the level of expenditures from local funds, and as such, there is a requirement to maintain maintenance of effort. And you can see for FY '21, we were able to do that, and we have consistently been able to do that each year. So we want to continue that trend.
Excuse me, where is that in here in the plan?
It is on page four.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So on, and I will tell you which page this is on, this is farther back. There is a table on page 16 where this information is represented in a table instead of a bar graph. The bar graph is just, it visually represents the same information. You can see, based on this table, sorry, we have seen a reduction in the total number of students that are represented by special education with a total of 812 this year. Some of those numbers were impacted by COVID, obviously. Some students were withdrawn because of, you know, they're wanting to participate at home. We did see a decline in the areas of speech and language impairment, as well as other health impairment and specific learning disability. We do anticipate that in the next fiscal year that we'll see those numbers kind of recover as a result of students re-enrolling. We've already seen that, and these numbers are actually based on the October count. So, you know, they've already fluctuated since the October count. We've seen an increase since then. Staffing patterns and then the number of providers can be found on page four as well as in Appendix D. So special education and related services include a variety of different service areas. The first includes infants and toddlers. It also includes our obligation for Childfind. We do have an obligation to provide certain services to parentally placed students in public and peripheral schools. And then we have school-based services, which can include inclusion. We do have some regional programs that are encompassed within that, as well as our speech therapy services, occupational therapy services, physical therapy services, and then some other services as well. And this chart is not actually in the physical staffing plan. This is kind of a summary of the numbers that are represented all on one slide. You can see in the FY '21 contract line that there was a reduction in contracts that was represented in the staff column, which is always a good thing. We're always happy to see that because it does typically result in a greater continuity of care, as we do have our staff longer than we have our contracts, obviously. So we, you know, we really are able to build those relationships with families as well as with the students, and as a result of that, you see a larger impact. There are additional staff that are not represented in this chart, and those are the ones that I was referring to, such as the teacher for the visually impaired. Many of those services are provided through the consortium. Because the numbers don't really fluctuate at all, because we really always have those services available to us, I do not represent them on the chart. So the next slide is monitoring and evaluation. So special education services are delivered through a continuum of least restrictive environments, and we're always striving to deliver student services in the least restrictive environment. On this particular chart, you can see that over time, we've consistently been right around the same mark. We are starting to see a decline in the column A, which is the participation inside the general education setting, 80% of the time or more. We're still well over the state target for that area, and it's really because of the very unique needs that we're starting to see that we're seeing a fluctuation in the This slide represents a description of the continuum of instructional environments, and you'll see that there are a very kind of defined list of environments that are included, but there are many variations on each of these environments that are based on student unique needs. So while we may have a student participating in inclusion, they may also participate in more of a hybrid type setting where they're in inclusion for a good portion of the day, but they may participate in one of the regional programs for one part of the day because it's more appropriate for that particular student. We continue to offer parent supports through our Partners for Success and our preschool partners liaisons. For our preschool, we have Laura Osterling, and then for our school-based Partners for Success, we have Jennifer Christian. They are grant-funded positions that are here at the Board of Ed and as well at infants and toddlers, and they are resources that parents can reach out to, to kind of lean on as a support, ask questions, get more information about the process, et cetera. And then we also have our CCAC president, Tiana Glover, who is responsible for the oversight of the CCAC in general. Questions? And I can hopefully provide you with answers.
Just, do you mind sending that presentation to us?
Of course. I will have Ms. Wright.
Ms. Wright has that presentation.
Thank you.
She'll make sure.
It's on board docs.
This? This? Ms. Wright is saying that it's in board docs.
It was in our board docs.
I have a different. I have the rest of the row.
You have the full staffing plan, and Ms. Wright just put the presentation in board docs, so it is there for you.
Thank you. So I do have a question. The paraeducators, and you gave us this nice list of all the schools, how do you see that impacted for next year? Are they going to be moving people around? I'm sure some students are going to be moving up to other schools.
So we account for, or I account for that when I draft this chart. So I go through all of the current enrollments, and then I list out all the students that require additional adult support or one-to-one, and then I track where they're moving. So most of them, it's a general kind of feeder pattern.
Okay.
In some instances, like, for example, Bayside, they could go to Stevensville, they could go to Mata Peak, so I'll kind of search where they live and put them in the appropriate school. And then we account for that in this column.
On page 20?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then there is, there's also, we account for the level of need. There are some students that may only need that support in, say, reading, and then there are others that need it all day long, so we account for that as well.
Do we have any kind of idea of how many will be going to other programs outside of our district? Do we have that number yet?
So right now, there aren't any changes. We're always striving to.
Get ahead of that.
Do what's best for the students. There aren't any changes currently.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. The teacher that comes from Maryland School for the Blind, is that an in-kind service?
So that is funded through the consortium, so that's one of the agreements that we have with the Midshore Special Education Consortium.
Okay. So that person also takes care of the other four districts?
Correct.
And we just get our time when we can?
Mm-hmm. We actually do deployment during the summer, and we look at all the needs for all four counties, and then we kind of allocate time based on the needs of the IEP. So we ensure that all the districts get the needs that they need. And if that means hiring additional staff, then we have to do that. We do actually have two teachers for the visually impaired through the consortium. Questions now? Mr. Smith?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go to break, but everybody's ready to keep going, aren't they?
Please.
Okay.
So do we need Ms. Smith to stay here for this action?
Yes, that's what Dr. Kane's going to talk to her about real quick in one second.
Okay.
Because it's an action item, but I don't see it on my paperwork.
It's on here.
801, but I don't have, I don't.
The big plan is on here.
Yeah, the big plan, but the action isn't.
Oh, what exactly we're voting on? Okay.
Right. And I obviously didn't see the slide presentation until the fourth one.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, 801, we move to the May meeting, next meeting. Human Resources, Mrs. Bass?
Sir, can we just make a motion to table the Special Education Staffing Plan to the work session or the June meeting?
The work session.
To the work session.
To the May 15th work session.
Do you have a motion? I have a second.
I'm making the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Carries, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Bass. The next one is to have a Human Resource and Substitute Bus Drive report that we, has been presented to us in, since it's personnel in closed sessions. Anybody have any questions or?
Mr. Smith, I make a motion to accept the HR report as presented in closed section, except for the recommended hiring of an executive position.
Have a second? Have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, 50. Okay, transfer requests, none. Okay, policies of board approval. The first one is 632, promotions or retention.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members, and executive team. Tonight, I'm Michelle McNeil, supervisor of early learning, Title I, Title III, and migrant. I'm here tonight for the final read and approval of Policy 632 and Regulation 632.1. The last time we had met, there was a comment in regards to defining the satisfactory level on regulation. We met with the committee, and the committee, after looking at COMAR, changed the statement to satisfactorily completing the academic requirements set forth by the district. That was the only change that we had made, and that was in the regulation, not the policy. Any questions?
We had no other comments on that?
No.
Okay.
Hey, board members, have any questions on this? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Policy Number 631, promotion or retention, and the coordinating regulation is 632.1. Yes, Policy 632. Oh, sorry, 632, and then 632.1. Thank you. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Ayes have it, 50.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next thing would be student behavior intervention, Policy Number 638, Regulation 638-1.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Jolene Smith, supervisor of special education. I bring before you this evening Policy 638 and Regulation 638.1 for the final read. Since we last met, there have not been any additional comments or changes to the regulation or the policy. Any questions?
Board members, have any questions at this time?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to accept Policy Number 638, Student Behavior Interventions, and Regulation 638.1.
Second. Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, everybody say aye. Ayes have it, 50.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thanks, Ms. Smith.
And Equity, 648 and 648-1.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members, executive team. My name is Matt Evans, supervisor of student services. I'm here for the Queen Anne's County Equity Policy and Equity Regulation, which is Number 648 and 648.1 for the third reading. We did, the policy committee met on April 21st. There were changes that were recommended by Mr. Burns, and I believe Mrs. Harper was bringing that back to a closed session.
We did, and we have a discussion?
So I'd make amendment, I'm sorry, I'm making a motion to amend Policy 648, and I'm sending a copy of the proposed amendment to the board members and Dr. Kane at this time. And I guess we can do two things. I'm recommending that we put it out for a second read because there are substantial changes. Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members, and executive team. Tonight, I'm Michelle McNeil, Supervisor of Early Learning Title I, Title III, and Migrant. I'm here tonight for the final read and approval of Policy 632 and Regulation 632.1. The last time we had met, there was a comment in regards to defining the satisfactory level on regulation. We met with the committee, and the committee, after looking at COMAR, changed the statement to satisfactorily completing the academic requirements set forth by the district. That was the only change that we had made, and that was in the regulation, not the policy. Any questions?
We had no other comments on that?
No.
Okay.
Hey, board members, have any questions on this? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Policy Number 631 Promotion and Retention and the coordinating regulation is 632.1.
Yep, Policy 632.
Oh, sorry, 632, and then 632.1. Thank you. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next thing would be student behavior intervention, Policy Number 638, Regulation 638-1.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Jolene Smith, Supervisor of Special Education. I bring before you this evening Policy 638 and Regulation 638.1 for the final read. Since we last met, there have not been any additional comments or changes to the regulation or the policy. Any questions?
Board members, have any questions at this time?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to accept Policy Number 638, Student Behavior Interventions and Regulation 638.1.
Second. Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, everybody say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thanks, Ms. Smith.
And Equity, 648 and 648-1.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members, executive team. My name is Matt Evans, Supervisor of Student Services. I'm here for the Queenstown County Equity Policy and Equity Regulation, which is Number 648 and 648.1, for the third reading. We did, the policy, committee met on April 21st. There were changes that were recommended by Mr. Burns, and I believe Mrs. Harper was bringing that back to a closed session.
We did, and we have a discussion?
So I'd make amendment, I'm sorry, I'm making a motion to amend Policy 648, and I'm sending a copy of the proposed amendment to the board members and Dr. Kane at this And I guess we can do two things. I'm recommending that we put it out for a second read, because there are substantial changes, as you'll see. Or we can keep it for further discussion, I guess, now.
I make the, well, I would make the motion that because there are so many changes on this, that we extend the second read, so that the public has an opportunity to put some more input on the revised policy.
Okay, any other?
Well, point of order, doesn't he need a second for his motion first?
Yeah, probably. Second. Let's have a second, we have discussion. Anybody have a second on this?
Second.
Okay, second, okay, we're going to discuss this. You've got the changes, and these are what you sent us.
Correct.
This.
Everybody should have received it.
I have not seen this, so I highly recommend this being tabled and sent back out.
So your motion is for these changes, but to go, but to move it on to a further agenda so that the public has time to look at all this?
Well, let me clarify. The motion is to amend the Policy 648, and I've sent the proposed amendments to each of the board members and Dr. Kane. And that would be my motion. I guess we'd have to rule on that first. Obviously, it's already been seconded, we're in discussion.
So there is not a Policy 648 just yet? Because the board has not approved a Policy 648? So you are making recommendations for changes to the proposed 648?
Proposed 648, thank you, yes. That'll be correct.
I would think that you would want to put it out for the public, and since we just got it like two minutes ago, I don't think that.
I agree with that.
Extend the read.
Yes, Dr. Kane.
Please.
Darren.
Matt, you okay staying there?
Yeah.
All right. For the record, Darren Burns, Board Attorney. Dr. Kane, thank you for pointing that one piece out, it was important, because I heard that twice, and I was going to mention that. The other piece, I would say, is while, obviously, when you reference what you're emailing and sharing, that's now, it's part of the public record. I certainly encourage you to post that as soon as you can. It's available for anybody who wants to look at it. Certainly, if you pass the motion to extend your second reading period, it'll be out there for people to see. I do think, for the record, you may want to summarize, especially since you've said, and the public's heard you say, it's extensive recommended changes to this draft policy. You may want to summarize, at least, I call them the high points or the main points of your changes, recognizing that if you pass this motion, people will see the rest of it. I just think it's good for the record to maybe say what's behind your number of changes. And I think you had mentioned, you had mentioned in the discussion, and I'll share this, that you thought at one point that it should be closer to the state's regulations. I mean, that was one of the things I know that was mentioned, and I certainly don't, there's no legal impediment to that. But I think it's good to summarize. I'll stop.
Okay, so let me summarize. First of all, just draw everybody's attention to the, one of the purposes, I guess, the central purpose of having an equity policy, aside from conforming with the Maryland State, you know, COMAR, the regulations that we have one, the real purpose of it is to help shrink the gaps, achievement gaps in the schools among the students, whether it's the race gap, gender gap, what have you. So taking a look at that and seeing what was on the original, or the proposed, currently proposed policy, there were a couple of issues. The first one is Darren mentioned, what we had in our policy goes above and beyond what the COMAR was recommending. So there were a lot of, well, there were several definitions that are not found in the COMAR. So one of the proposed changes is to take those definitions out and rely solely on the definitions that are listed in the COMAR. Second one is that the policy shall conform with the COMAR. So it won't be, there won't, there should not be anything in the policy outside of the COMAR, sort of consistent with what I just said. And the purpose statement was changed somewhat, or the purpose, and paragraph two, the board statement has been changed. That pretty much sums it up. There are a lot of minor changes to it. Almost every paragraph has got some changes, which will be seen when it's posted publicly.
Well, I, based on just that, I certainly concur with Dr. Kane. I think that, and I think this was your ten. I think you should extend your reading period and give the public an opportunity to see what the next version looks like.
Certainly. I agree with that.
Good. And just to be clear, for the public, the only purpose for the educational equity policy is not to eliminate achievement gaps. It is also to ensure access to programming, ensure that we are treating all of our children, giving them an equal opportunity for accessing all programs, and ensure that we are leveling the playing field for those who are disadvantaged. So it is a bit deeper than the achievement gap, so I just want everybody to understand that. And while it shall conform with COMAR, that does not mean that it only has to say exactly what is in COMAR.
I'm going to hear this motion again. We've had Mark put in changes, and I think we all are in agreement that this should be out for 30 days, so the public can see these major changes. So I have a motion to look at these changes, put them into policy, and I'm prayer facing, so any member come up when I'm short. And then we'll put this out for a second read to our next regular reading, June 2nd.
You're amending the proposed Policy 648, the policy, not the regulation, because that'll follow later, but you're amending your proposed Policy 648 and extending your second read period for those amended, for those changes to be reviewed by the public.
And will be out for a second read for June 2nd. Do I have a motion? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, by saying aye? Aye. Those nay? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, let me change that, please. It's four and one abstention. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Let's do it.
Nope, no, it's good.
Miss thing, can you do a roll call by hand?
I will. Ms. Bennett?
Yes, I vote for the extension. Let me be clear.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Schifinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Morset?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Abstain.
Sorry, the motion carries four, zero, one abstain. Now we're into materials instruction. Math. Then we've got math, science, and novels. How you doing?
Board members, Dr. Kane, executive staff. I'm, for the record, I'm Amy Smith, Supervisor of Mathematics K-12 and Gifted and Talented. So we are at a, our final review for the mathematics textbook adoption for grades three through five. We did not have any comments regarding the textbook review, and so now it's just a matter of that final approval or any questions that you may have regarding the text and the online resource supports for teachers.
I have questions, if Mr. Smith, if you don't mind. I need to ask Ms. Towers. It says the fiscal impact dollar amount of $276,000 is coming from the capital FY 2021. Is that this current school year? Not next school year? And we have those funds budgeted? Okay, thank you.
And this is replacing something that's how old?
So we currently actually have no text resources in our kindergarten through fifth grade. The last time we had text resources was about seven years ago. So we have been working on homegrown materials, which is very challenging in supporting students at home, as well as in the classroom for planning purposes with the teachers.
And this contract is for six years?
It's for six years. So that's the one-time cost, maybe nothing for the next six years in three through five.
After six years, what could happen?
So after six years, then it would be back up for another review. We would either extend year to year if we chose to stay with the iReady, or we would have to review and go through another adoption process, or we would be in a similar situation that we're at now, that we would be without a text resource again.
If we extend past six years, do we know what roughly the yearly cost? I mean, I can divide six into 276.
It's roughly about that. I mean, in six years, there'll be a little bit of attrition as far as their professional rates as well, I'm sure, but it's roughly about dividing it six years. We are getting a significant discount by going in a six-year contract.
So I know there's inflation, there's always other things of that nature. If it was 300,000, it'd be 50 a year. If it's less, say 45,000 a year.
Correct.
Just roughly, I'll put my numbers in my head.
Just a rough estimate, correct.
So that's roughly what it will be.
Correct.
And a little higher because of inflation, but then we could renew on a one or two year if we wanted to. It is extendable.
That is correct.
If we decided.
Yes, sir.
It's not something we're going to have to address this large amount in another six years if it's working well.
No, that's correct.
Mr. Smith, one more question. Is this a sole source, or was this bid out?
We went through the bid process as far as the textbook review, and we had six different companies that placed text in for a review
Okay.
That the team went through and then did some.
We have that all documented, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have all of the review papers.
Thank you. And this is a recommendation of the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to accept iReady Classroom Mathematics Textbook Review for grades three, four, five, elementary implementation, fiscal impact $276,454.79 from the budget source of capital FY 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Next on agenda is Mr. Page, Science.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Kane, executive team. For the record, my name is Michael Page. I am the Supervisor of Science, Environmental Literacy, PE and Health, and, yeah, PE and Health, there we go. All right.
Long list.
All right, today I am bringing forward a textbook adoption for the EDC Earth Science textbook. The Science Department is recommending the funds in order to purchase the LabAids EDC Earth Science textbook, and it's associated resources to replace the existing textbook. The current textbook is not aligned to our state standards or the next-generation science standards, and is 16 years old. So today I'm here to ask for the approval of that contract.
Mr. Page, you just sort of said, same thing she said, but science.
Same thing she said.
And I know you can't probably give a good answer, you can. I wouldn't say life expectancy of this program. I mean, the last one was 16 years, the world's changing every day now, so new things come out. We looking at a three, five, 10-year life expectancy of this book?
So this particular one, you know, we are, we are looking at a, so the online component of this is seven years?
Seven years.
We, like Mrs. Smith had alluded to, we do try to extend those, and those are generally year-to-year if we do extend those.
So this is for seven years?
Yes, sir. The online is?
Online.
We're purchasing the online and the hard copy.
Hard copies are ours when we purchase them. The online stuff is licensed for seven years.
Yes, sir.
And then I'm assuming there'll be a nominal charge after that?
Yes, if we continue.
But there is something that's, I mean, there's something regulated there, not, we're not going to be able to hostage for some ungodly amount of money in seven years.
So same questions, Ms. Towers. $105,000 FY 2021, so it's this school year, and we have it budgeted? And it's, again, gone through the bidding process and recommended by the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is grade levels 10 through 12, I'm reading? Or is it 11, just 11th and 12?
So this is, the target audience here is going to be 10 and 11. Grade 10 and 11.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Smith, I make the motion to accept the EDC Earth Science textbook adoption. All right, fiscal impact dollar amount of $105,949.05. Budget source is capital FY 2021.
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, President Smith and board members, Dr. Kane, and members of the executive team. For the record, my name is Bridget Passon. I'm the ELA Supervisor for grades three through 12. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval on the six novels we'd like to put into our middle school curricula. The total cost is $19,672.32 from the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant, Year Three. The books went out for public comment the day after the last time that we met. I have not received any comments on them. Do you need me to read the titles and the authors? Or would you like me to?
I think so.
Yeah, because they're all.
So I'm here tonight to just, it's an action item to ask for your approval.
Did a few novels drop off of this from the previous novels we had? Okay.
No, they didn't.
Okay, so I remember seeing some other ones, but they must have been for the higher grades?
We've had, you dealt with me for three rounds of these, and the first two rounds have gone through, and this is my smallest list.
Okay.
So we were looking basically at six books?
Yes.
And these are still from the federal grant monies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I took a look at pretty much all the books.
Okay.
I very much appreciate the crossover in Rebound. We discussed that before.
Yes.
You know, male protagonists. Decent, I looked online, I didn't read them, but I did review them.
They're companion texts, so.
Right.
So the crossover is the story of twins, and then Rebound is the story of the father of the twins.
That's right.
But crossover, we're putting in seventh grade, which is typically read first, and then you go back to the dad's story in eighth grade.
Okay, and I saw you can actually read them either way, but
You can, yes.
Recommended the way you did it.
Yes, yes. Prequels will kill you. Yeah. Prequel, yes.
I don't know about the other board members, but I did have just an issue with Harbor May, and I'm not so keen on approving that. And here's why. One of the, I guess, main protagonists in that is a son of an immigrant whose father's in deportation.
Yes.
Right, and he's incarcerated, awaiting deportation. Eventually, he's deported. It didn't look to me, first of all, there's no quotation marks, a lot of punctuation is missing. I guess it's artistic license. The second thing, it's for seventh graders, and I'm not sure how much seventh graders actually know about immigration law. And you know, I'm coming from an immigration law
Sure, absolutely.
Background, and I've worked on the border with Border Patrol for several years, actually. And there's issues right now, obviously nationally, that are going on around the border. There's a lot of dissension, like many other issues, on both sides of the table. I don't think it's appropriate for kids to just have this emotional read about immigration and, you know, the potential consequences, just from the perspective of one child whose father's in deportation.
So you read the book? You read the book?
I read most of it. So I know there's other stories that are involved in there.
So.
I did take it off the shelf.
Okay, great.
I did read it as well.
Okay, and you do have the same concerns or the same feelings?
I do.
Okay, okay.
I very much enjoyed A Red Crossover, very much enjoyed it.
Right.
But it was a, yeah, it was a great read. And then, of course, read that there was, Rebound was the prequel. Very much liked those, yes. A Song for a Well, I, that as well, yes, loved it.
Yes, that's in our animal intelligence unit, and we'll pair with Where the Red Fertile Grows. Yes.
Mark, Mr. Schifinelli, do you recommend that it is for a higher grade, for like, maybe a ninth grader rather than a seventh grader?
Well, it's written, you know, according to the reviews and that sort of thing. It's written for middle school students, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's appropriate for them. You know, it could be promoted for, obviously, different reasons, sales and that sort of thing.
But just may I counter argue to, before you vote? And then, okay, so Jaclyn Woodson, one of her books is already in, Brown Girl Dreaming is in sixth grade. So Harbor Me is a group of sixth graders. And the primary, the main character is female protagonist Haley. And she just, now, the teacher and me struggled with it because we would never send five sixth graders into a room just to talk about their feelings and what they're going through. So when I was reading it, I was like, okay, Bridget, calm down. It's fiction, but let's see what Woodsen is showing us. And so each of the characters are going through something. There is a Caucasian student whose dad lost his job. And they had to move, you know, out of their big palatial home. You know, as you know, again, because you've read it. For what it does, you know, the immigration, it's what he's feeling based on what he saw. And so I don't, I didn't get the sense, nor did the committee, that it gets into the border, nor would we go down that road. I think I will point out and be frank that, you know, we tend to have those concerns in the northern part of our county. You know, we have kids afraid to come to school or parents afraid to pick up their children, or so I've heard. So they're already talking about it. They already know it's happening. The things our middle schoolers are dealing with and seeing on the news and hearing at home, it's already out there. So this just puts it in a safe context, again, as a choice. And, you know, with your immigration background, I certainly understand where you're coming from. Where I come from as an educator and the committee comes from is it's just a beautiful way to show how all these kids are resilient. And they're going through real-time, current struggles. And so I, for both sides, and I know you will vote accordingly. You know, if I have to walk away with only five, then I will. And, you know, maybe I'll come back and try again some other time, but.
And I hope you do. Because there are a lot of other uplifting books out there, too. You know, written by minorities, about minorities as protagonists. You know, Dr. Ben Carson's biography or autobiography of a, you know, young black kid that game, or not game system, but got through the system and, you know, achieved great things in life. So I would like to see personally more books like that that are, give a positive attitude. And I've looked at the other books that we bought. You know, a lot of them revolve around police brutality and other very pertinent social issues, you know. So, but a lot of it is negative. And, you know, I was looking at Adici's book, and I've read her book, Under a Yellow Sun.
Okay.
About the Biophasi succession. So I have nothing against her, but it's, you know, there's, a lot of these books have a very negative connotation. I'll be frank as well. However, we're just talking about these.
Such is life, right? And so there's not always great stories. And I think, you know, police brutality, I applaud our police officers and I adore them and as do our teachers. And I think what's interesting about All American Boys and The Hate U Give is that there's a black male police officer in both of them who both have conversations with the main characters about what has happened and are asked to check their own bias and their own level of discrimination.
Sure.
Possibly all the way to what extent are they racist. And so, again, those are in high school, you know, and set in the context, you know, when we've done professional development there. But again, they are contemporary issues. So these are real-time things that our kids are already dealing with and talking about. And we just want to give them an opportunity to do it in a structured educational setting.
Right, so while we're on the point, you know, I know there's options here. And there are a lot of people that are concerned that, you know, these issues, these social issues or political issues certainly should be taught in school, but should be more in a confined setting where there's, you know, unbiased teaching on either way, whatever the current issues are, whether it's the border or anything else.
Which, and if there's biased teaching going on, that's something that the principal and I will deal with.
Yeah, I understand.
Professional development, that is not.
Right.
The intent, nor will it be tolerated.
Right. But back to this book in particular, though, obviously, not only are migrant kids or students that are citizens with migrant parents will be reading it. You know, a lot of people, kids will be reading it, I'd assume, if we're going to be spending that much money on it, but.
If they and their families, so choose.
That's right. So just the fact that, you know, these are seventh graders, there's a lot more to immigration. And I don't mean, you know, technically, I mean socially, that's on the table. This pulls on the heartstrings, you know. And I just think it leans more one way than the other. And for that, I just can't approve it, at least not at this time. Or, you know, I'll vote accordingly, but I'm not too keen on that one, but.
Thank you for your consideration.
The other books.
Given it a read.
Yep, the other books, I heard great things about. The other ones, I took a look, crossover and rebound and that kind of thing. So thanks for looking at the boy male protagonist.
Yeah, sure, thanks.
Looking at that for him. And I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I read Song for a Whale and Rebound. Song for a Whale, Having a Disabled Child, I loved that book. Very good book. Rebound, I liked it. I'm just not used to reading in that format, so it was a little.
Yeah, repotting.
Some kids, it's going to be a little challenging, but otherwise, the book was fine. So those are the two I got a chance to read.
Right. I think it's our first deaf character. I don't think we have a deaf character in any of our other books. So, and it weaves together science and music, which I think gives us lots of opportunities for cross-curricular.
And it spoke a lot not only for her world, but the people around her, what their world was like.
Her parents, her interaction with her parents and testing batteries, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I saw in the classroom, one of the visits just last week, an interpreter with sign language for a student. Second or third grade student.
Yes.
That was impressive. Impressive, I guess she was a parrot teacher, parrot professional. Anyway.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Smith, I make a motion to accept all the new novels in the secondary English, Linguists, Arts and English courses. Fiscal impact dollar amount of $19,672.32. Budget source, Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant, year three.
I have a second?
Second.
For discussion, since we do have, I mean, these books are all going to go either up or down. I don't know if that's really fair if some board members have anxiety about one or two.
Can I speak to my motion?
Yes. I'm just, that's my discussion part.
Thank you, sir. I think all books are excellent and they bring out people's emotions, their thoughts. That's for families to talk about. It creates a dialogue, an understanding of whatever everyone is going through, hopefully not just migrant children and their families to be reading this, but all of our students. And this is not Nazi Germany. We get to have books. That's my stance. I'm not asking for rhetorical.
Okay, come on, let's keep this level.
I am. That's just my take on it.
All right, and my take is that I would vote for all five books. And if we don't vote for all of them, or I'm sorry, all five of the six books, and we don't vote for all six, I would move to amend it and vote for all except for the one particular book.
We have a motion to vote on all, a first and a second on all six right at this present time.
Correct.
Are you open for any amendment to your motion, Mr.?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
But wait, would that mean that none of my books would get approved?
Well, we have finished.
Haven't finished yet.
Haven't finished it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we have motion discussion on keeping all, one, two, three, four, five, six books under one motion to be approved. Mrs. Ray, can you roll call?
I will. Mr. Moore, set?
Yes.
And Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Schifinelli?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
I have three in the negative and two.
It fails at the current time. What I would suggest is we.
At this current time, Mr. Smith, Mr. Schifinelli can make his own motion.
Sure. So, Mr. Smith, I would move to adopt all of the books except for Harbor Me.
Second.
At first, any further discussion? Mrs. Ray, can you do call again?
Okay, I will. Moore, set?
Yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Schifinelli?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
All right. That's not how he did it, Nazi Germany.
Easy, easy, everybody.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Passan.
Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you for your time. Okay, the next is 806 CARES Grant.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members. Tonight we bring before you for approval and acceptance of $3,026,41 from the Elementary and Secondary Relief Fund, known as S R II. As you recall, back in budget season, the restricted budget was approved at a certain dollar amount. This has come in here in April and looking for your approval of the acceptance of the grant. Can we clarify, is this the acceptance of this grant or giving the spending authority? Now, this is to extend the restricted budget for this amount to account for this grant. So you might recall, we did it last year when we got. I remember that we made a motion and it was for, to grant the spending authority. That's why I'm trying to make a clarification, if that's what it is. Because we are adding to budget. I just want to make, I just want a clarification, that's all. Because asking for the acceptance of it or the spending authority, I'm just trying to make it, understand. I'm wondering if there's a difference.
In the attachment that you have in front of you is what the initial application was. And this was sent out as far as for S R II requests and now to all the principals, administrators and supervisors. The requests were reviewed and prioritized. And that was done in February. Since the award from the state, there was preliminary notification of what would be approved under the grant. So we're looking for the acceptance of the $3,026,41 and looking for a suspending authority to go ahead and end this S R II fund, our summer school, our summer enrichment program.
If we accept this, can we modify how some of this is spent? That's a question. Because there was some questions I had about things in here, the budget narrative. Do we actually need these things? Some of the supplies, some of the P P E, do we have any leftover from the past school year? I just, I had so many questions and I apologize. I was just seeing this and. Can we address any of those for you now? That's fine, if you don't mind.
Or if you want to email us and we can.
Okay. I mean, because like the individual partitions and the face shields and I just, you know, don't we have any of that stuff left over? Is there enough to get through?
And that's a good question. Because one thing to be mindful of, it's a two-year grant, and we don't know where we're going to be next year and if it's going to be needed or not. One thing that the grant does allow is actually budget amendments to be done to the grant.
Okay.
In case the need comes up or additional funding is available for other things. We're hearing from the governor's office that there could, US Treasury has given them money for summer school. It's only 176, but could we allocate some of that towards this summer? So there's definitely going to be opportunities for amendments of this grant because of the size of it. And because of COVID, the needs are going to definitely, it's constantly changing.
Because this grant's good through September 23.
Correct.
I guess, I mean, just a, if it can be amended and changed, because as we've worked through this whole past year, things change on a daily basis. And one question I had is 900 laptops for pre, pre-K and K. Are those children that age safe? Not safe, I mean, I know what my, some of my grandkids do to laptops. And when they're in K and pre-K, to have a 300 and some dollar laptop, is that, I mean, that's what we're doing?
That has been a request from a lot of the schools in addition to our supervisor of technology to get devices into the students' hands early on. And I don't believe it's to be taken home. I believe it's in the school, Dr. Kane, as well.
Yes, that's correct. However, if we found ourselves in a situation like we did last spring and we needed to send something home, then we could certainly have parents to sign about. But there was a big disconnect with the earliest grades, the ones that were requesting these laptops for, or these devices for, and the way we were able to deliver instruction.
So basically, the pre-K and K necessarily will be in those cabinets where they charge remover light and just use them each day at school, unless, like you said, something happens where there's a pandemic or something.
That is my understanding, but I can confirm that with Mr..
I just. That is correct.
Okay. And the other thing I saw, and individual partitions for $100,000 and teacher plexiglass partitions. Things are changing. Do we still need all that?
Potentially not. We still have requests coming in from parents, from teachers, from staff that would like to see that extra level of protection. At the same time, we're also starting to see some studies that say they may not be the best thing to use because they're limiting some airflow right in front of you. So we, when we were budgeting for this, looked at the worst-case scenario and how we potentially could help to get students back in. Because we may not need all of these or even any of them at some point, we could do an amendment and it would allow us to use that money for other items.
Okay, so like, we're talking $3 million. This has up to September 23 to use this. So the next six months or next year, it's not going to all be used up. There'll still be a lot of that money still where we, where.
It's based on current.
And principals can make, whoever makes recommendations, Paula, whoever wants to sit there and make recommendations to change things around. Because, like you said, sometimes you only know the burn rate of certain things. And what the burn rate of one thing might be different later on.
Right, and it's based upon current need. If we're not going to stockpile these things and tuck it away, it's, what's the most critical need now? What is it that you're seeing? Even though it's in the initial grant application that we have to submit for this funds, it is followed up with a question, okay? When the purchase order requisition comes through, is this number what you're seeing, current need?[1589.45] current need? So it does stretch out for...
I'm just, I mean, I think one of the board members mentioned one time that he'd go to these schools, like these different kind of boards kids are learning from, some schools don't have them.
Whiteboards.
Whiteboards. You know, if we needed them to keep the distance away so people could sit back farther, that might be something more useful than something in here as we adapt to what's going on, that's my, so it could be constantly looked at by principals and staff to do this on a rolling basis.
And exactly, the team, correct.
And there are initiatives for things like whiteboards and smart boards throughout our capital funding.
Uh huh. I'm just thinking, Neil, I just don't want to spend it just because we haven't. You know, it's something we're gonna, you know, because, you know, once we get next year, I know we have some more money hopefully coming, but it's, it can get eaten up pretty quick if something went south or if something, I mean, you know, we're in a new world.
This was done in January, correct? So needs have changed since then?
Yes.
Is there any way that we could table this and send our questions to you? Do we actually need some of these things? I have a lot of questions about the salaries and I can't talk about it in the open session. So if I could send those questions to you, I would, I would like to, I don't want to talk about it.
The one thing that I would ask is that since this is for our summer enrichment program that...
Talk about it at the work session?
Yes, but their workbooks do need to be ordered for summer school. There's some summer school needs that are out there currently now.
As well as some PPE needs.
To our summer school...
So the math workbooks?
Correct.
So we could make a motion to go ahead and spend that money?
Right, and the next work session, the 19th, it'll be brought for your review for approval for that, for workbooks, because it is over the $25,000.
Okay, so that gives us time.
And this might be out of, but our teachers are teaching this summer, that's part, that's in this funding.
Yes, in the proposed.
And they, they're, understand that.
It's still with negotiations though.
Understand, that's why I don't want to go any farther on that question.
Okay.
But...
And we should hopefully know more by May 19?
Yes.
That would be...
Yes, we are reading on from the state, MSD has their final MOU certification, it's in the hands of the Department of Legislature for final approval. We're told by the CFO group yesterday that the certification should be coming out next week along with our final draft state aid numbers. So we're looking at two things, our state aid numbers, our final numbers on that, and then our certification for maintenance of effort with the county.
So can I make a motion to table this until the March 19 work session?
Do I have a second?
Second.
For discussion, you mentioned something that you needed, something done for, by, is there anything, can do anything you need to do prior to that, Dr. Kane, or to make sure this, we don't, you talked summer school, some, somebody had to order, what did you say, order something?
Yeah.
To get the summer school planning in the process, but as the workbooks are coming on the 19th for approval now, so we have time then.
We have time for that?
Yes, thank you, yes.
And there is PPE that we're ordering monthly. There are several types of PPE that we're ordering.
Coming out of this?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion I'm hearing is that we bring this, table this, ask questions, and table it until our work session on...
19th.
May 19. I have a first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, five oh.
Thank you.
Contracts for approval.
So Mrs. Smith is coming forward for summer math intervention?
Mrs. Towers is going to join me again.
I do need to clarify, there's going to be two summer workbooks, one for the summer school program, and then what Ms. Smith is going to bring forward tonight is for the school system as a whole. And that would be funded under ESR-2 proposed.
So this evening, what you have in front of you for an action item is that student workbooks for students K to eight, every student for the summer would receive a workbook. Those that are going to attend our summer program, that's going to be what we use to help support our curriculum in the classroom. But those workbooks are designed so that students have some extra access points for some of the practice skills that are corely focused around their standards this year and to help regain some skills from some of the disconnect in the learning that has occurred over the past year. They come with some little tutorials, some coaching within the book itself, but it'll then allow us a great resource within the summer school setting for the students that attend that. But every student will walk out with one and it takes them a little bit away from the technology world of getting them back into some paper and pencil and some mathematics practice and an opportunity for families to use that at home as well.
So sole source or has been, has been bid out?
It's a sole source. It is a company that we have used for our...
I recognize it.
Our different core content areas in the past and currently.
Was there concern about shipping and availability?
They are all ready to go once it's approved. So we will have them in time for the dismissal of schools at the end of the year as well as for that first group of summer school students that start right on June 12, I believe.
So we'll have them by June 8 prior, or hopefully, not June 8, but early June.
I've worked with the company and they've assured that we should have them in here by the end of May if I can process my order within this next week and a half.
Okay. If we don't, is there, how do we, I mean...
If we don't, we're going to cut it close. Because a lot of, a lot of schools are also working at getting the workbooks to give out to students in different ways.
Now, will these workbooks be used next fall or the kids just, or the students be used over the summer?
This is for summer only. It's for the students, an opportunity for students to have something different than the Exact Path. And one of the big things that has come to place particularly in our grade, our elementary grades is Exact Path is a great resource and it'll still be available for students to be able to use over the summer, but it causes some, some challenges for families because it is all solely online, so they're staring at a screen a lot. And sometimes it takes students well past where they should be developmentally, so that causes a little bit more frustration. These workbooks stay focused within their grade level to keep their skills fresh and for when they come into the fall.
Just a quick question, because I'm not sure I'm clear. So this is using the ESR-2 grant money?
Proposed, yes.
Right, is it in the proposal for the, where am I seeing that on?
Right at the top under Supplies. It is in there with the workbooks and reading.
Well, I saw that, but it was only $14,000, so we're going with the math workbooks.
And the middle school too, as well. And then we'd like to put an amendment into as well and include Ms. Smith's request and with ESR-2 to do an amendment.
So it's, so it's not on here?
It's not on here, okay.
It is, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that a portion of it is because of this, all students...
Right, so a portion is listed in this, but the other portion is from other parts of the ESR-2 grant.
And that's what had me confused at first.
I'm sorry.
So you have, so we have 825 workbooks at $14,000, is that part of your...
That is the number of students we're planning for within the summer school.
Right, and you said this was for summer school, I guess maybe I'm not...
So there, it's one set of workbooks. Those students that come to summer school, they will use those workbooks, so they'll get direct instruction with a teacher. For everyone else, they will get a workbook to take home so that they have something to practice skills and some teaching resources.
Okay, so this $45,000 that you want to use ESR funds for is not in this $3 million request here?
A portion of it is, yes.
Okay. And then how many books will this $45,000?
It will, it will buy every student at each grade level, both from kindergarten to eighth grade, a text resource. So it's basically 650 students per grade level.
So we could pull out those two line items there? We wouldn't need those in, in the $3 million request if you're getting, if we approve the $45,000, correct?
Well, this is part of that grant, they're just asking to spend this money.
And they're also using money...
Oh, no, I understand that, but it's not all in here, so it's, I don't, if it, there's only a portion accounted for in the $3 million.
Yes.
You're asking for more than what's in here for this piece?
Well, we're going to have to do a budget amendment to include the full amount.
Correct.
So a question, can we vote on this since we tabled CARES-2 for next work session? So this gets tabled as well?
I would think so.
Oh, you don't think, I mean, we tabled CARES-2, but this is a separate item.
This is the same funding, this is ESR-2 funding.
Is there any money left over from the previous ESR grants? It's all gone. The last of it was spent with Exact Path.
With Exact Path. But some of that is not listed, that seems as if we could vote what's not in here. Could we not? Is it, Dr. Kane, do you know? You tabled the entire ESR allocation.
Right, but some of this is, okay.
Do we want to revisit that? And like Tammy suggested the first time, Ms. Harper? Either, what, withdraw your motion and then we vote to approve the workbooks and...
We got a second one coming for another right behind that, ESR-2 money.
We do withdraw your motion and then we pass on, on voting on the ESR until we're done with this and then bring the ESR back and table what we didn't, like line item approved?
Help me out, Darren. How do we do this with an amendment? Do we do an amendment or do a second motion? Because I see now that we have two other, two other items coming up for ESR-2 funding.
Yeah, all right, so to back up a second, Darren Burns, Board Attorney, remember that as a parliamentary fundamental, right? If there's a proposed action item that comes before the board and a prime, what they call a primary motion is made, right? That primary motion is now the board's motion if it's second. The next thing that happens is discussion. If in that discussion, a sec, what they call a secondary motion is made, which is a motion to amend, right? That happens, that has to be dealt with first. If that passes, that changes the board's motion that was pending.
Okay, well, that's not what this is.
I understand that. My point of saying that is, start with clarifying what it is that somebody wants to move. Always for the record, restate what you're trying to do. To get back to your question is, I'm not so sure right this minute it's clear where you guys are with what you're trying to do. So I'm just suggesting that you state more clearly, if any board member has something they want to achieve, state exactly the motion. Because if the superintendent makes a recommendation, your act is to act on the recommendation. That's the next step. And if you start parsing all this, the way it's starting to go, I think you're losing your record on it a little bit. I'm just making that recommendation, go one step, reorient yourselves so you can get to your parliamentary process.
Okay, so moving forward, looking forward also to the other two items that are part of the ESR-2, they do not need to be done right away. I mean, we will be, hopefully, all things considered, Chesapeake speech and the SOILNT contract can easily wait until the May 19.
Correct, that's a question.
That's the question I'm asking now. What is the problem is the time of the essence for the workbooks being here by the time school is over.
Correct.
Since we had a motion during this meeting, we can amend that motion.
What's the motion on board right now?
There's no motion at the moment.
Okay.
The previous motion was to table the ESR-2 for further discussion at the work session.
All right.
But doesn't preclude us from spending some of it now to facilitate this?
That's what I was going to get to, that motion passed, right?
We just amended to say that we are granting through the ESR-2 grant fund the workbooks because time is of the essence.
Again, your motion to table passed, right?
Yes.
Correct. Right. So, so now you're talking, you can't amend, you can't amend the passed motion.
Correct.
That's done.
Okay.
You can revisit an action that you took. If you're in the same meeting, it's considered a reconsideration. If you're in the next meeting, it's a rescission. If you're trying to rescind what you did, if what you're trying to do is do something different from what you did, in this case, you actually put it off, right? Then I suggest that you formulate your motion on a very specific item that doesn't interfere with the fact you just said you're tabling the thing.
Okay, I got it.
You told the public you're going out.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Okay, we currently have a motion on the floor.
Nope, you don't have any motion on the floor.
Oh, we had a motion, a second.
No.
Discussion.
No, we didn't make that, we just asked questions.
I thought you made a motion and we found out we did the issue, we couldn't do it.
No.
I think we need to take it and vote this off.
We made the motion and decided to table the ESR-2 grants for discussion at the work session.
Right.
As he just said, we can make a motion to reconsider the motion to table the ESR-2 grants to approve the math summer intervention and summer workbooks for this fiscal impact of $45,249.97 budget source ESR-2 grant. That we can do.
Okay, but that, that, to my knowledge...
That was a motion.
There's been a motion and a second to do that, and since we froze the ESR-2, we're going to have to vote on this one, then we can reconsider a new one.
I just, I just, did I not make the motion?
She just made the motion.
You were amending your motion?
I'm not amending anything. I'm making, it's called a reconsideration of a previous motion.
Okay.
So I am making a motion to reconsider the previous motion to table the ESR-2 grants to allow the acceptance of the math summer, to offer the purchase of the math summer intervention and summer school workbooks fiscal impact dollar amount of $45,249.97 from the budget source of the ESR-2 grant.
But otherwise table the rest?
But otherwise tabling the rest of the ESR-2 grants.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, have it five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry about that.
Me too, I apologize. I didn't see forward and I apologize.
I should have done that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, after that discussion, we have two more coming up to us, but they both have ESR-2 funding.
Am I presenting it?
Ma'am?
I am presenting it.
I don't want to waste your time.
Can I ask a question? Is time of the essence on either one of these? Can we...
I can wait till the 19th.
We can wait till the 19th on both of them? So I make a motion, sir, for both of them, are you?
Yes.
To table the Chesapeake speech and amend the contract for the SOILNT until the May 19 work session.
Okay.
Now, the motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five oh. We're going to table those two till, and we'll put them on the agenda for May the 19th.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, see you then. Thank you.
8-08, donations Midshore Community Foundation.
Good evening. Bring before you tonight for approval of a donation made to Queen Anne's County Public Schools. We are in receipt of a donation from Midshore Community Foundation for our Food Service Department to support efforts to ensure students receive adequate food during COVID interruptions. This funding was from their COVID-19 Response Fund.
So Midshore Community Foundation is donating this money to us?
Correct.
To cover funds for...
Right, it's my understanding in talking with others is that they have this COVID-19 Response Fund, Caroline County sending a grant application for this, and they funded all five counties for the $20,000.
Nice, wow.
So they just gave that, they had ESR money, so it's going back into the school for that.
And the goal was to, or the thought would be to meet with the Food Service Department, identify their needs, prioritize them, to see where this funding can be used for since it's restricted.
And that would be, that would be the direction of our staff to do that, to see where it should be used.
At the Food Service Staff, yes.
Sounds like it's getting easier, gang. Have a motion?
Motion to approve the acceptance of the Midshore Community Foundation $20,000 donation. Thank you.
Second. Now, a motion is second, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes, have it five oh.
Thank you.
The next item we bring before you is the expenditure reports for a period ending April.
You can see all the categories are in positive available balance with the year ending at, spent at 86.2%.
And I know we have major bills or other bills coming in through the end of the year. In another two or three weeks, by first of June, probably have it pretty solid of where we're going to be at the end of the year.
Correct.
Any questions by the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Towers. The second, the expenditure per port, the full one, could I ask, I apologize, subtitle, number one, 8,000 transfers, 10,000?
For ESMIC?
Thank you. That was the only line that was at 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Tully?
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, members of the board. For the record, my name is Adam Tully, I'm the supervisor of CTE and Social Studies, and I am here before you this evening to ask for approval for purchase and adoption of two textbooks, one for World History and one for AP World History.
These are just going out for review?
Actually, yeah, for review.
For, yes, for first read, yes.
So we don't need approval or anything tonight, right? Just information?
For first read.
Right. I didn't take a look at the textbook, I appreciate you, you put it down there.
Absolutely.
Sure. I did go online to the, to the office, I guess it's the same company as the summer math intervention stuff?
Yes, it used to be Pearson, they've broken off, so.
Wow.
And it's pretty neat, with the interactive licenses, you know, on the internet, and I looked at a couple of different chapters, was able to do that, and it's pretty impressive set, so.
It is, we have been very impressed. We, we have been very impressed, and, you know, we put this out to my high school team for review for, for, for both textbooks, and they do a thorough review, and, you know, we look at all, all the factors, you know, including calls, length of contract as well, and, you know, this, the books that we are currently using are 14 years old. And so with these, these new textbooks, and we did look at, we did look at two other companies, two other major companies, and this, aside from the, you know, the material that's in there, and just the outstanding resource, they are the newest copyrights above the other textbook companies. So the one textbook for World History, if we were able to purchase, is an eight-year license. So that would put us all the way to, it's a 2022 copyright, so that would put us all the way to 2030. And even after that time, after that eight years, so the resource was still going to be eight years old versus 14, which is, you know, what we're doing now, so it really is a benefit.
And I saw on there that the licenses for the interactive part of the internet, one was for eight years and one was for seven years, but I thought they were the same textbook.
So it is the same textbook. So at the, at the last minute, which was Monday, the textbook representative contacted me and apologized and said that there is also, I didn't put this forward, there is also an eight-year option. And the, so we, we initially had, you know, I had put in their request for the seven-year, which was around $36,000. The eight-year option was only $1,900 more to go for an extra year. And when, when they do it, you know, upfront like that, as a, as a bundle, it's, it's cheaper than after ending seven years, it wouldn't be $2,000 to add on the eighth year. It's cheaper to do it upfront. So for the cost, it's, you know, to add an extra year on for $1,900 is, is really a great bargain. So that was the, so the seven-year was the initial, but then the last minute that was in there. But it's, you know, even though it is a change, I think it's definitely, it would be a worthwhile change if we, you know, move forward with this.
Ms. Tully, I have a question. So if we're sending this out for first review for public comment, I mean, second, so it means July, we could possibly be, will that be enough time for the next school year to purchase these books? Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. And what grade levels are these aimed at?
So World History is typically 11th grade, and then AP is, is either 11th or 12th grade. And they have also, and of course with AP, they follow the College Board, you know, syllabus, and their curriculum with World History. This book is already done, this company's already done in alignment with the MSDE World History framework, so it's, it's all done. So, so the amount of time, you know, Ms. Harper, you mentioned July, so it would cut down on the amount of time that, that teachers would actually need to prepare, because that, that initial alignment with the framework is already done. So they, they take the framework, and they, they make an alignment with the textbook and what resources are there, and, and certain units and the pages, and it's all done, so it really, it does, you know, cut down on that for them.
I flipped through the World Civ book, and that, to me, struck me as college level. So that, that will be your AP text?
The AP text is the authorist Sterns, yes.
May I make a motion to send out for pop first review?
I don't think we need a motion, it's not an action item.
Oh, we don't have to make it, to send it out?
It's just information, I think.
It just goes. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Anya, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Towers.
Good evening.
Okay, we have no transfer notices. Our next work session will be May the 19th, and we'll be adding a few things to that, which we didn't get through tonight. Our next regular Board meeting will be June the 2nd, and our final one of the year will be June the 16th. Do I have any other comments by the Board, or Dr. Kane, for this evening?
No, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Should I adjourn?
I'm making a motion to reconvene an executive closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation,